Apologize for starting a little bit late here. We had a board of review meeting directly after this and it went right to the allotted time, so we just had to switch out a few seats. And I think we're all gathered, so I will call the meeting to order and ask for a rule call.
Bollig.
Here.
Boudreaux. Carpenter.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
And I should've said this is a regular village board meeting, and all village board meetings are televised live by OCA Media on Spectrum Cable, Channel 983. And archive meetings are available for viewing on the OCA Media's YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/UCAMedia. So, thank you to OCA Media for being here and letting folks watch at home. Our first agenda item is under Public Appearances. We have a discussion with Jason Horstman from Horston Networks. He is the Oregon Area Fire EMS IT Provider, and this is regarding possible action regarding hiring Horstman Networks to prepare a request for a proposal, an RFP, for a new telephone system for village departments. So, if someone wants to make this motion to get this on the table, recommended motion is to approve the Technology Services Approval Proposal from Horstman Networks in the amount of $8,500 to assist in the village's transition to a new phone system and fiber internet. The funding will come from Fund 414, which is the capital equipment account.
I'll second.
Alright, so we have that on the table for discussion. Jason, it sounds like you're here. Do you want to come up and just tell us a little bit about what we're doing here?
Absolutely. Happy to be here. Alright, so my name's Jason Horstman. This is Brenda Horstman. We are the owners of Horstman Networks. And we were brought to the meeting a while back about possibly helping you guys make that transition to a phone system and fiber internet. I'm the IT Provider for the fire department, so that's kind of how this all started.
Okay.
One of the items that I heard there were some questions about right away, Item 4, was that we were going to draft an RFP to publish. It's a request for, excuse me, Request for Proposal. So, we're going to get three analog quotes, and those quotes are basically, analog means the type of phone system we currently have. We do own the hardware, the server's onsite. Our goal is to try to get us into a voice-over-internet protocol solution, which is much more modern phone system with a lot of features. And with these three quotes that we're going to request, we're going to get a request for both leasing the phones and the hardware, and a request for purchasing it outright, the phones. So, I know that was something that was brought up right away with a question. So, basically, I just wanted to bring it back to you guys and see if you have any other questions on the proposal itself here.
Mike, do you want to talk a little bit about how many phones the village has and why we're doing this right now?
Candy, do you have a count, Candy? What do you think?
Um, a lot.
A lot. That's a good number.
Um, I think we're over, we're probably exceeding 150.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, phones, some phones don't have extensions, direct dial, but I haven't gathered that information quite.
And then, and then we, then a new phone system and additional phones for the library building we have to take into consideration, which Jason is already aware of. I mean, we're doing this because our phone system is going to be almost 20 years old, and it's limping along, and so we need to do something with it. And we were going to, honestly, Lisa and I were talking about budgeting and taking, borrow the money to go out and just buy our phone system, and then, and I'll be honest with you, the TDS came to town and we met with Jason and the fire chief, and we started talking about, well, maybe we should be looking at doing a lease. And so, that's what Jason's going to do. He's going to do a comparison for us to see what, which is the best, best buy for us.
Questions? Yeah.
Hey, I'm wondering, when you're looking at these, coming up with this proposal, we would want something that's easy to transfer, because if we build a new village hall within the next six years, eight years, whatever we're looking at, that's changeable, but it would want it, we'd want to transfer it easily, like the phones can move themselves, I know. Like, that's, that's good. But obviously, hardwire lines are going to not be. But that's part of the proposal, right? That you're aware that...
Absolutely, and I could touch a little more on that, too. An analog phone system would definitely be more difficult to move, but a voice solution, which is really what we're shooting for here, definitely brings the ability to move the phones around. It's simply plugging them into an internet connection brings a dial tone to the phone. So, this would be a phone system that, whether we lease or purchase, we'd be able to take, you'd be able to move the phones around and take with to any other buildings. Definitely a technology that is very, I would say, most of the large companies are doing this now. It's very prevalent.
Yeah, Horton.
In all likelihood, it'll be going to voice-over-internet. Are we going to keep any form of analog service for emergency services, kind of as a backup?
Absolutely. Actually, one of the things we're going to do is, in Item 2, we're going to be going to all the buildings and finding, there will always be a need for some analog lines, whether it be for fire, alarm systems, elevators, and we're going to be basically mapping out the analog lines and coming up with a report pack, and probably giving you guys a report, letting you know how many analog lines we still need for that building. And with every single one of these providers, they'd be able to provide analog and voice service.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything from staff?
I just want to thank the fire chief for bringing Jason and his firm to our attention, because I will tell you, we were really struggling what we were going to do with this, because I, I'm not a telephone person. I don't think Lisa is. No. And so, we're trying to, we're trying to find a consultant, and it's hard to do, that is not pushing their own system and product, and unfortunately, Glenn made it aware of Jason, so I appreciate this. Thank you, Glenn, for that.
You're welcome.
Jerry?
Yes, just a quick question, and thanks for being here tonight.
Oh, absolutely.
How big is your staff?
So, there's seven, five employees and two contractors.
Okay.
Yep.
So, what is your response time if we have problems?
So, one of the, one of the goals is actually, so, we're going to be an advise, we're taking an advisory role here. Now, as far as phone system support, we would love to be your support moving forward, but one of the things we're going to really push here is, in Item 5, we're going to be definitely pushing for information about the service agreement, warranty information, hours of support, uptime guarantee. So, as much as I would love to be that help, I think one of the best things is you're going to get that for free with the service that you're paying for.
Alright, thank you.
So, but we would absolutely be available for additional support if needed.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Alright, anything else? Well, I think it makes sense to hire a consultant on this, because our staff's time is better used on the many other projects that we're working on, in my opinion. And it seems like a reasonable price to pay to invest in 150 phones.
Yeah.
Alright, so there's no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for being here, Jason.
No problem. Big for having you.
Thank you.
Alright, Item 4A, this is the Village Attorney, Village Administrator Report. We have Item A, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Agreement Regarding Road Fees Between First Presbyterian Church of Oregon and the Village of Oregon. So, we have a recommended motion to approve the agreement.
I'll move. Is that what you want?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Any second, if we can talk about this?
I'll second it.
Okay.
For discussion.
So, this was, this was brought to us before, right? And so, this is the formal agreement that we hired the attorney to write up, so everything is, is legal and official?
And we had to wait, we had to wait for the church to go through its
Oh, right.
system and process until...
I'm sure they had to get back to their members and they had to vote on it.
So, that's why it's taken some, some time to get back to us.
Okay. Alright, so to recap, the Presbyterian Church is going on a payment plan to, to pay an equal installment of $4,920, beginning on July 15th of this year, going through 2048. We're not going to charge them interest. I think at the previous meeting that we discussed this, we wanted to work with the church and make this over and over again. So, any questions on this? Yeah, Jerry?
I don't remember exactly why, but why the 20-year term on this?
That was to give the church a payment plan that they felt was within their means from a budgetary standpoint.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've discussed this, so...
Yep.
Yeah, that's kind of what I recall. I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure I was right.
Just, and just to mention, this payment obligation will be secured by a mortgage that they've agreed to sign.
The board may recall that you asked for that, so they provided that.
Mm-hmm. A mortgage on the church property?
On the church property.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five approval minutes, we have none. Six approval of vouchers, these are in our packet. Questions on this? Or, I guess, do we need a motion first?
Yes, please.
A motion to approve? To get this on the table?
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, now, questions? Sorry. To recap, we have a total for approval of $429,410.16.
Just a quick question. 6330, is that the fire truck? The 128, 179?
Yeah, I think it is.
The new fire truck?
Yes, that's for the fire truck.
Okay, alright, so I thought, thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, then we'll have a rule call for approval, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
And Bollig?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So, at this time, we have community input as part of the agenda, allows anyone who's in the audience that's not already on the agenda to come forward. Any takers? Lots of empty chairs out there. Moving on to number eight, Proclaimations and Announcements, Board Comments. Do we have comments, board members? Any exciting announcements? Alright, B, Staff Comments, Director of Public Works Report. Two things in there, and then Jeff, I'll let you mention anything more. Reminder of Tuesday, June 4th, 2019, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., we have a public information meeting, talking about the Janesville Street, Park Street intersection improvements. And then also, Jeff, sounds like you want to recognize the public works staff for installing the concrete pad for the youth center's outdoor basketball court.
Yep, actually, yeah, tomorrow, that's tomorrow night in this meeting from 7:00 to 8:30 in this room. There'll be a short presentation on the options that are being considered for the layout of the intersection. Chance to be able to ask questions of the engineers, public works, utility, anything like that. And then, just kind of, after we're done with that, just kind of open house if people want to come up and look at drawings and that type of stuff. So, they'll be in this room.
Okay.
So, that'll be good. And then, I would like to recognize our public works staff, including Nick Hack and Terry Went, who helped to place the concrete for the basketball court down there. A while ago, when the youth center, I was talking to the youth center contractor, and he said, "We'd really love to just be able to do the court," but, you know, they were kind of at, at the end of funds and everything like that. And I told him, I said, "Well, we've got staff, and we've got some talented staff that can do really nice concrete work. If he could get the area prepped and the concrete donated, then, you know, we would be able to commit some time from our staff." And so, they were able to do that last, that Wednesday, Thursday, I think they did the pour. When was the dedication?
I think it went in Thursday morning, the ribbon company was Thursday night.
Yeah, so it was Wednesday, the first pour, and Thursday, the second pour, and everything like that. But it was a fun project to do. I know the guy's, the guy that does it enjoys the concrete work, and I just think it's a neat way we can kind of help give a little bit back as a village to the, to the youth center and kind of welcome them to the neighborhood. So, it's going to be a lot of fun out there. So, that was all.
Good. And thank you, Randy, for emceeing a really nice ribbon cutting at the youth center last week. Had a really nice turnout. If you weren't there, what, 150 people there?
Couple hundred.
Yeah.
And actually, they moved in the next day, by the way.
And lots of kids, and it was a very feel-good moment, and made you feel good to be part of the village. So, thank you for everyone who was part of that and made that possible. We have some upcoming meetings on there. Just note that Monday, July 1st, we don't have a board meeting, and then we have a possible board meeting on the 8th, regular on the 15th, possible on the 22nd, and then on Thursday, 25th, make sure this is on your calendar, because this is a Thursday night. We have a joint meeting at the senior center with the towns.
Ingenious, I forget. So, in, in the old days, we used to try to have one board meeting in July.
Oh, isn't that cute?
I know, in the old days. And, and so, and so, and probably sometimes the meeting's long, you know, and, but I also know that's hard in the beginning of July, because people are on vacation, and we've had trouble sometimes getting a quorum. So, most, it's okay with the board. What I like to do is shoot for having the first meeting in July, on July 15th, and then, if we need the meeting, the 22nd, hold off on the 1st and the 8th unless we really need to have a meeting. Sometimes it's just hard to get quorum for those Thursdays.
Sure.
That works.
That'd be bad.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah. I'm, I'm all for that, as long as the July 15th isn't like a four and a half hour meeting.
I'll be careful with that.
Yeah. Because turns out that, like, if I need to, you know, leave, I have to, since I'm in charge now, I just can't leave. I have to turn it over to someone.
I'll be careful with that.
Alright. Alright, so, number nine, Communication Miscellaneous Business. We have a discussion of possible action regarding senior center policies. So, I will read these all, and then we will talk about them. So, we have first, 3.03 Confidentiality Policy and Pledge, 3.04 Confidentiality Standard and Agreement, 3.05 Cash Handling Policy, 3.06 Seniors Helping Seniors Fund Policy, 4.01 Conducting Research Policy, 4.02 Political Candidates Policy, 4.03 Selling and Soliciting Policy, 4.04 Advertising or Promotion of a Product or Service Policy, and 5.01 Computer Policy. Does someone want to make a motion to approve these, and then we'll have Rachel talk about them?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Randy?
No, Cory.
Cory, sorry. You all sort of blended down there. Alright, do you, does anyone have any specific questions? Rachel, do you want to give us an overview? How would you like to...
This is just sort of the second half of the policies we've been working on for our reaccreditation process that will take place later this year. So, very few of these policies are actually new. Many of them have been being revised since the 1990s, but I'd be happy to take questions. Hopefully, they gave you a little insight into how things work at the senior center.
Any specific questions for the director? Appreciate you putting these out there. It's good to know that we're very, you're very organized in handling any sort of situation that comes up.
We try.
It's a good thing. No questions? Any questions? Alright, well, apparently, they were very well-written.
Very good.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright, Item B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approval of Senior Center Front Door Access System. We have a recommended motion to approve the proposal from J&amp;K's Security Solutions for Key Card Access System for Senior Center Front Door in the amount of $3,848.16.
So, move.
Second.
Rachel, do you want to tell us about this?
The senior center gets used after hours and on weekends by a variety of groups that are responsible for unlocking and locking the doors up. And unfortunately, our doors are not the most straightforward doors in the world, and people do struggle to make sure they're locked properly. And we don't, we, we don't like having our building unsecured, and we're thinking that an access system where we can give somebody a card that allows them to access the building during a certain time period when their event is going on would work well, because then they don't have to worry about whether they've locked the building properly when they leave. It is just locked again. And so, that's something we've never had, but makes a lot of sense now that we have that kind of technology, which we didn't when the building was built.
Any questions? Yeah, Jerry?
Yes, how will you control the keys, Rachel?
The keys are actually kind of like...
With the cards, how will you control?
Yeah, they're like hotel room keys, in that you can program them. Yep, we can keep them and program them.
Okay, very good. And then, $3,800, how much of your budget is, or did you budget that for this year?
We had a significant increase in the building repair budget this year.
Okay.
So, that taking this money out to pay for that card access system would still leave us with more total money in the building repair budget than we had last year budgeted.
So, you're going to be covered for the year?
We should be.
Very good, thank you.
So, Rachel, I just remember on the coalition several times, we talked about people confused and having to train people to get in, and sometimes the door is left unlocked and somebody has to run in, and so, this sounds like a much-needed upgrade.
Well, it's, it's always unfortunate when the staff gets a call at midnight that the building is unlocked and someone needs to come lock it. So, yeah, if we can avoid that, we'd like to.
I don't know who does that.
We appreciate the fact that you guys check. Very much.
Anything else? Alright, then we have a motion to approve the proposal from J&amp;K Security Solutions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, Police Department Reports. We have four items here. We have the K-9 reports, the School Resource Officer Reports, Summary of Major Crimes and Investigations Activity Report. Chief, do you want to lead us through those?
Sure. K-9 reports just goes over some of the deployments and training. I will make a note that they did successfully pass their annual certification with 100% proficiency, so that's always a good thing to know that our K-9 is doing what they're supposed to be doing. Other than that, it's just basically talking about training and, and some of the deployments they had. There's a little bit on some of the narcotics that we recovered. School Resource Officer Report, these are back in April, for the most part, just outlines the things that they do during the day. They're, he's, he's very busy, so it'll be interesting to see how that goes going forward. Summary of Major Crimes, again, continues to show our activity level. It's funny, every time I, somebody sees this, they, they kind of hesitate, "So, I didn't realize you guys did all that stuff." So, yeah, we're, we're busy. And it, it's unfortunate that some of the things happen that, that do happen, but our staff is very well-trained and very good at what they do, so... Any specific questions on the summary of major crimes? No? Good. Active Investigations, again, Detective Bureau is also very busy. I don't, I won't talk about specifics, but I'm happy to answer any questions on open cases. Nope?
So, for those watching, this is in the packet online, if you want to take a look at this. Any questions from board members? Yeah, Randy?
Chief, can I ask about the School Resource Officer in the summertime? Just reassigned?
Yeah, reassigned to patrol.
Okay.
Yeah.
I figured. Thank you.
So, there's no issues in summer school? Like, you know, there's, like, does he help in July for the classes at the high school?
Not normally, no, they, they don't. Unless, if there's something that specifically comes up, then they'll call us, but they don't have anybody dedicated to the school for that.
Okay.
Alright, well, thank you very much for providing those and keeping us informed.
You're welcome.
Thank you to you and your, your staff for doing that. Alright, Item D, we have Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Appointing a Village Board Member to Serve as an alternate, or actually, well, how...
We want to do it as a member now.
Yeah, okay. So, I have a, I have a note from Matt. Actually, apparently, I'm supposed to do this as the village board president. So, I would, I would entertain a motion to appoint me to serve on the Joint Review Board for the September 17th Annual Tax Increment District Meeting.
I'll make that motion.
That was going to get interesting.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Unless someone wants to fight me for it, but apparently, traditionally, it has been the village president. Jerry has done it in the past, because Steve was out of town, so if you want to fight me for that...
I, you know, it'd be good experience.
Okay.
Good answer, Jerry.
I did check my calendar, I'm here, so I'm happy to do that. Alright, all in favor of having me do that, say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed?
Wait, did you get the second?
Yeah, I think it was...
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, sorry.
No one's opposed? And that carries.
I knew after tonight, Jenny wouldn't do it.
Alright, Item E, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Approval of 2019, 2020 Renewal of Alcohol Beverage Licenses. So, I think we're going to do these in groups. Is that okay? Like, approve them in groups and see if we have questions per, like, per class? Is that okay with you, Candy?
Perfect.
Alright, so I will read, I will read each group, we'll have a motion, we'll have discussion, we'll have action. Okay, so, class, and by the way, for those watching, this is an annual thing. The Village of Oregon requires all businesses to submit an alcohol license renewal or new renewal every year at this time. So, we do this every year. Alright, so, Class A Beer, this is fermented malted beverage, and Class A Cider only. We have Quick Trip Inc. by Tanya J. Fitzsimmons, who's the agent. That's the Quick Trip at 856 North Main Street. We have Quick Trip Agent Alex Lenzer, that's the Quick Trip at 916 Janesville Street. We have Quick Trip with Agent Peggy Packard, that's the one at 135 North Main Street. And then we have Stop and Go of Madison, Agent Andrew Bowman, and that's located 856 Janesville Street. So, if we have a motion to approve those...
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on this group? Anything from staff to report?
Do you want me to talk, I mean, I did all these, do you want me to talk about any of these?
Sure, yeah, if you want to give us highlights or good, bad, ugly.
So, in the, in the first group, the only one that did not comply, I guess, was Quick Trip on Main Street, and it's only because they didn't have their license displayed. They actually had the last two years displayed, and so, they had to go find the license, and it was in the back, in the file folder or something, somewhere back there, they said. And so, I went back the next night, and they still didn't have it displayed, so, but they have it, just so you know.
Okay.
Which Quick Trip was this? There's two on Main Street.
The Central.
The Central, thank you.
Is it displayed now, chief?
You know, I don't know, I haven't been back there.
Field trip?
I did specifically tell them that it must be displayed and take them the last two years down, so...
You have a motion to walk over there?
It's my neighborhood Quick Trip. I'll ask them to see it next time I'm in as a customer.
Alright, well, that sounds fairly satisfactory, so, any discussion on that group? If I was all in favor of approving those licenses, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Alright, next, so then, so chief, I'll read these, you can give the report, if it's something good, okay. So, now we have Class A Combination, this is fermented malt beverage and intoxicating liquor. We have Bill's Food Center of Oregon, the agent is William Faust, that's at 787 North Main Street. We have Mahan Shia Vanti LLC, the agent is Mahan Nasafi Yum from Mahan's Liquor at 905 LLC. The agent is Mahan Nasafi Yum from Mahan's Liquor at 905 North Main Street. And then we have Gio Richards Meats and Deli. The agent is Richard Wisden, and that's at 688 Janesville Street. So a motion to approve those. Anyone?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, chief?
No issues with that group.
No issues. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one for Class A Intoxicating Liquor. This is the Chocolate Caper and Cork Ease Custom Bakery LLC. The agent is Daniel Donahue, and that is at 105 South Main Street. Anything to report?
No issues with that one.
All right. Motion to approve?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Randy seconded.
Did Randy second? I think Randy seconded.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, okay. Class B Combination, this is a longer list. This is Fermented Malt Beverage and Intoxicating Liquor. We have Headquarters Oregon LLC. The agent is Jamie Bush, and that's at 101 Concord Drive. The Legend at Bergamot, the agent is Jack Gaudian, that's at 699 Bergamot Boulevard. Senior Peppers LLC, the agent is Magaly Richter, that's at 104 and 108 Janesville Street. Mulligan's Bar and Grill, the agent is Steven Alt, that's at 830 Oregon Center Drive. Oregon Bowl LLC, the agent is Chad Hendrickson, that's at 214 Spring Street. Ace's Main Tap, the agent is Bridget Ace, that's at 121 South Main Street. And then we have Charlie's Main Event, the agent is David Heidi, and that's at 113, 117, and 119 South Main Street in Oregon. Chief, anything on these?
Well, Candy failed to mail the replacement to Headquarters. Oh, wait.
He's kidding.
So, so they didn't have, they didn't have theirs displayed, and they said they asked her for replacement and never got it in the mail, even though Candy mailed it. But she ended up hand-delivering it to them, so kudos to her for that.
Second time around, hand-delivered.
Yeah.
That's public, public work dedication right there.
I actually think we're gonna be hand-delivering all of these.
Just put them up there, up your sleeve, right?
Send an 18-year-old to deliver them. Right.
Get your check done at the same time.
Ace's Main Tap, they've been closed, so I haven't been able to get in there. I have no idea on theirs. And then Charlie's on Main, it was not displayed, and they could not contact Dave, so I have no idea if they have one or not.
We hand-delivered one to Heidi.
Did you?
Yep.
Okay, well, there you go. That's it.
Okay. All right.
Two hand deliveries on that. Nice.
Special teamwork.
Can I ask a question?
Question.
Can a, did, did these places that haven't hung them in a timely fashion, do they get like a warning and then do they get a citation? Is there a penalty for that?
That's up to the board.
Okay, but currently they're?
Yeah, no.
Okay. I was, was just wondering.
Jenna? Question? No. Okay. I mean, maybe. Any other discussion? What Jenna's thinking? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve those under Class B Combination. Anyone?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Class B Fermented Malt Beverage and Class C Wine. We are gonna do the first two separately. So we have La Roca's Pizzeria. The agent is Vito La Roca, and that's at 971 Janesville Street. And we have Maria's Pizza. The agent is John Delicato at 134 South Main Street. Anything to report on those two, chief?
Just ran into the, no, that's the other one. No issues on that one.
Uh huh, yeah. So I entertain a motion to approve those two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the next one is Firefly Coffee House Arsen Cheese. I am the agent, Jeannie Carpenter, and we are at 114 North Main Street. So I am not gonna make this motion, and I am not gonna vote on it. So any issues to report there, chief?
No issues.
That's always good. So if someone wants to make a motion regarding Firefly?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
I'll second this.
All right, so we have a motion as second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, aye. Motion carries. All right, and then we have been asked to table the last one, Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse, until the June 17th Board Meeting. So that one will come back to us. All right, anything else from staff? All right, otherwise we will be, oh, wait, sorry.
One more.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, one more. Class B Fermented Malt Beverage. This is Oregon LLC. This is doing business as Pizza Pit. The agent is Jennifer White at 130 North Main Street. Chief, anything there?
No issues on that one.
All right, then I entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you for going to all of those businesses, chief.
Yeah, you're welcome. I didn't know if you want to talk about the compliance.
I would like to hear about that.
Yeah. I would, I would just like, before we do that, I would, as a business owner, I did not know this. I should have known this, I suppose, on the board. But the chief of police and the fire chief is no longer here. Both of them go to each business to do inspection checks if you have a liquor license. So I just thought that was very interesting that the two head honchos were doing that. So I guess that's a good thing. I don't know if that was a super great use of the chief's times, but it, I tell you, it makes the owner of the business pay attention.
At least you, anyway.
Well, they came in, they, back-to-back days, I was like, oh my God, what, what am I doing wrong?
Oh, they don't go together?
No, no, they, they visit you separately.
Oh.
To give you two small strokes.
I imagine it was some sort of like, let's go have coffee.
Yeah. So thank you for that time. That's, I think it's a sign that we take this seriously in the Village of Oregon.
You know, it, and it's funny, because after we talked about it a little bit, it does give me an opportunity to get into some of the businesses that I don't normally get into. So while it's probably not the best use of my time, it does, it is productive, so.
Well, it's a little bit of community policing, too, I think.
Absolutely, yeah.
Gets you face, face-to-face time. All right, so.
We go in and check the bathrooms.
So, chief, do you want to talk about the, the compliance check?
Yeah, I'm assuming you guys all have this. We did a couple of compliance checks in 2018. There's a few failures. Ace's Main Tap failed. Just going down here, Charlie's on Main failed. 18. Who else, I think? Quick Trip North, looks like they failed as well. Quick Trip South, yeah. I think that's, trying to think off the top of my head how many passed, but I think Senior Peppers failed in February of 18. Did Mulligan's fail?
Eleven, eleven of eighteen.
Yep, Mulligan's failed. So we had a few failures. And again, just like every other time, we don't try and trick the businesses. We send in someone who's underage with their valid ID, and really, all they have to do is card, so.
Chief, of those businesses that failed that first check in 18, how many of them failed the second check in 18? I'm looking through, and it looks like most of them did pretty well the second time.
Yeah, go back through and look.
It seems like we're doing better.
Well, it's funny, because Ace's Main Tap passed the first one, and they failed the second one, so. Yeah, we are, it's kind of funny, because it seems like it kind of ebbs and flows.
Right. I remember last year was particularly bad year, and then, the board members, we had a meeting with the business owners, and that was fun. We got beat up on that a lot. I'm not sure we accomplished anything.
Yes, some of the businesses weren't too happy about it.
Yeah.
And I guess it's gonna be up to the board, I guess, if you want to continue with the twice-a-year checks, or how you want to handle that. Our biggest challenge when we do these is finding someone to be able to conduct them for us. We usually have to go to M A T C with someone in Protective Services or something like that, that'll volunteer their time to come out here and do that. Sometimes that takes a little bit of arrangement. Other than that, it's not too bad.
Does the board have any thought on, on that?
I like the idea, twice a year.
Okay. Amanda?
I was just gonna say, the only thing is, if somebody fails twice in a given year, I wouldn't be opposed to throwing in a third, just to make sure that they're getting the message. Give them an opportunity to pass it in a, in a given year, but.
We had several fail, and we went back out and did, and did just those businesses again.
Okay, yeah. Then whatever you're doing is fine. Never mind.
I guess I, I would like to say, I was kind of shocked by how many failed. I mean, to me, I look at this, and I don't think this looks great. I mean, you know, multiple years, I know, but, you know, I guess, I certainly wouldn't want to decrease how much we're doing this. I think we need to make sure that, that people are getting carded. I think it's important.
And that's really all it is. You just have to card them.
All right, well, it sounds like, carry on.
Very good.
Chief, some say server cited, some say business cited. I get the server, the person served.
So kind of in the middle of it, the law changes where you can't, you can't cite the business anymore, you have to actually cite the server.
Okay, got it, that's why. Okay, okay.
Right, Matt?
Correct.
Thank you.
And I appreciate 10, 10 years' worth. Just, it's nice to have a history to look back, yeah. Thanks.
Jeannie, one more question. I guess, what's the process of what happens, you know, with the failed test and going back? Like, what if they continually fail? What happens?
Yeah, that's.
So, we have a whole process up for this one, and it took us years to put together. And Jerry and I were very excited about that process. So if a, if a business fails so many in a 12-month period, is it three? If a business fails three checks in a 12-year period, we make the owner of the business come before us and tell us what they're doing to, to do it differently. So under the law, we cannot revoke their license. We can't do much to penalize them. The law does not let us. The Tavern League has done lots of lobbying to not let us do that. Mostly, the owner comes in and we honestly just beat them up. And then they tell us what they're gonna do differently. And sometimes that goes well, and sometimes it doesn't. And they beat us up, which is what happened at the last meeting. And so you saw posters in downtown businesses with the board members' phone numbers, having patrons call us to complain about the, the ID check policy. Are those still up, by the way?
I have not seen them, but they could.
That'd be great, since the board has changed like three times since those posters were up. Not that I was bitter about those posters. It was just irritating, because like, you know, just card your patrons.
Yeah.
That was, that's my, just, just ask for an ID.
I have some anecdotal evidence that some places, or at least some people at Bill, that work at Bills, for example, were carding everybody. And they said, that's our new policy. We have to card everybody. And they told somebody, that I overheard, and I corrected them on it, they said that, that's the board, the board, you know, said, we have to card everybody. And I said, no, no. The board recommends carding everyone who looks over 35. If you choose to card everyone, that is your right. That is the state law you have to comply with. But I just wanted to make it very clear that our, the board recommends carding people who look over 35, or under 35, thank you. Carding people who look under 35.
Yeah, I mean, I get that. Oftentimes, when you're dealing with a customer, it's much easier to blame someone else. I get that, but.
I don't mind if they want to blame us.
Yeah. It's part, yeah, it's part of the, it's not the shtick.
And Jeannie, can I ask one thing?
Yes, Candy.
And Cory, there's also a, there's also a resolution on our webpage.
Okay.
About the compliance checks. It's 16-18.
Thank you.
And they get that every licensing cycle. Every single licensing cycle.
Sometimes hand-delivered.
And sometimes hand-delivered.
Yes, Matt?
I'll just add, very briefly, the, the most direct consequence and immediate is, there's a citation issued to the, to the server. And so, and those aren't cheap. So for the employees, you know, it's a bit of a hit to, to be cited. And then one of the things we hear.
It's $376.
Which, you know.
Is a lot of money for a server, who is probably making not a ton of money.
Yeah. And the other thing that we hear is that in, in at least some cases, I don't know what percentage of the cases, but in, in some cases, the, those people end up being terminated. They lose their employment, and then, and then the business has to find a replacement. So.
Or the business pays the fine, that happens too.
Or they, or they will, the business will pay the fine for the employee. So there is an immediate consequence. And, but, you know, what we hear, and what we heard, what we've heard with, meaning with business owners, is that, you know, it's a, it's a challenge for them. We, being, being perfect is not easy on these, for them. That's, that's what we hear.
So, one last, so I know that there is training available for place for smoking?
Yep.
Is there, is there anything similar for?
There is. We, we actually have liaisons that go to the establishments to provide materials to them and give them training, whatever they need.
So they can't say they didn't get trained?
Well, yeah.
Depends whether they pass it on to their employees.
Every business.
They can say whatever they want, but we, we provide a liaison for them to do that.
And every business has to have a training manual that you have to turn in with your alcohol license renewal. It has to be written.
All right.
And they also have to take a course.
Yes.
Through, that's recognized through the Department of Revenue.
So it, like every, the servers?
Yep.
Wow.
If you're getting an operator's license, it's a course that you have to take.
So there should be no excuses?
It's just a simple card.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and the liaison, liaison is very helpful. It also helps staff keep on their toes. I know at the Firefly Sergeant Elsner, or can't remember his title, was that right, Sergeant, is our liaison. And every time he comes in, whoever is working the register is like, yep, we have this poster right here. Yep, that's where they're. We ask for IDs, and they get very nervous. And he's like, so I'm just here to see if you have any questions. So I, I like it. It helps, it keeps people on their toes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it also gives you a resource, too, if you have questions.
Yes. And he's very friendly. He's not trying to scare people.
Right.
But it's useful for a business owner, to let you know.
There you go.
Yeah. All right. So, any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll keep going. So report of committees. Item A is May 29th, 2019 Public Works in Utility Meeting. And trustee Ballack, you get to take this away.
Thank you. We had quite a meeting last Wednesday night, which was May 29th. It basically was a meeting about groundwater and the issues in the community that affect our residents. And the one we're gonna talk about tonight, and I've got two motions here, affect the Foxborough Golf Course. And I'm gonna let Jeff Rao, who did a very good job at the meeting, I thought, I'll let him give a little overview of what the proceedings were.
Do we need a motion first to discuss, or no?
You can have a presentation prior to the motion.
Okay, good. All right, I just want to make sure. So I know some of you have heard this, and for those of you had, I apologize. And I'll just try to kind of, you know, give you a nice view of what's going on over here, as well as hopefully give you some, some background information on where we've been with this. And tonight, in the audience, we have Brooke Schmidt, his wife, and Mike. Mike, what's your last name?
Carrick.
Carrick, who's the golf course superintendent here tonight. We've been working with them for, for years, and as, as we've dealt with, it's a very unique situation in the fact that Foxborough Golf Course, which you can see on the screen, is made up of parts that are in the village, right over here, the, and then the town of Oregon, and then the town of Rutland. So it's, it's a combination of a lot of different things, but for the most part, the area we're talking about today, tonight, is the area that's in the town of Oregon, bordering the Village of Oregon on, on three sides here. When Foxborough Golf Estates went in back in the 90s, I believe mid 90s, at that time, there was this weird kind of eye-shaped piece of land here that was fractured off in a certified survey map. And these parcels developed as part of Foxborough Golf Estates, which are single-family homes and some multifamily residents and stuff down here. I always figured that, you know, the, the line you can see here, the line, this is our, this is our village responsibility, and it never even occurred to me. But Brooke Schmidt brought it to my attention this last January or so, that said, you know, those two ponds out on the golf course, those are, those are your ponds. And, you know, I, I saw, that was news to me, and it's, it's, doesn't surprise me. Sometimes in this job, I find things that are ours, or not ours, or our responsibility, or not our responsibility. And so I did some looking into it, and I found actually that when, when this was developed, there must have been an agreement between the golf course people that owned it at the time, it was not Brooke and his wife or family, and the, the people, the developers here, that, you know, I guess they looked at it and said, well, the golf courses, they need ponds, and for a development, we need stormwater ponds. And what if we just got an easement and put our ponds on your land and, and that type of thing? So that, that's the easement for that, and a copy of that is in your packets. So we have two ponds in here. We call it the North Pond, and that takes care of pretty much everything that I'm kind of going around in a little circle here on the map. And then the South Pond, which takes in account this portion of the Foxborough, but it also takes in account a significant portion of the, the golf course up there, about 60% of the contributing area to the golf court, or of the, this pond is to the, the golf course pond right here. It was, and Brooke, at that time, brought it to my attention for a couple of things. Number one, you'll see in this picture here, the inlet pipe that's from the stormwater from the development going into that pond, that pipe was never secured. I don't know why that wasn't done in construction, but you can see it, it's separated. When they separate, they still operate, it's just, it comes kind of squeezing, water squeezes out here, it erodes, this thing sinks, and that type of thing. We also have a problem on the South Pond, although you really can't see it, because it's down in all this mess. And so, at that time, I, I told Brooke, I said, well, yes, you know, in the spring, early summer, we'll be able to get out there and, and reattach those once the ground is solid enough to be able to get out and do that. We also need to clean away some, a lot of debris and brush that's kind of holding things up back over here. So we committed to do that kind of maintenance on that area. The pond, this pond right here, which is the South Pond, it has a main overflow route that, that goes, really, there's, the interesting thing about both of these ponds is neither pond has an outlet, outlet structure of any type, any kind of outlet, other than just getting so full that it finally overland flows over the top. And there's kind of a low. that it finally overland flows over the top. And there's kind of a low, low spot along here that, uh, Brooke and Mike felt that had kind of sunk over time, and that was impacting the capacity of the pond a little bit. Really would be a fill of about eight inches or so along here, and we would seed it and sod, or seed it and mulch it and, and everything, and that would kind of help the capacity of that pond. So, those kind of thing, that kind of thing, at the very beginning, we, we agreed to say we would, we would assist them with that. We, I think everybody acknowledges we're in an unprecedented water cycle, per, per se. You know, we've had, um, if we look at the historical precipitation patterns, and we were in an unprecedented year, I think the highest recorded precipitation in twenty-eighteen, um, second highest up until eighteen-eighty-four. So, almost a hundred, what, whatever that is, forty, fifty years, um, to the point of, uh, you know, that we have, that we have not had that much, uh, moisture in our areas. So, we are dealing with water problems everywhere. People's sump pumps are running, springs and seeps are showing up everywhere. And the golf course, being the, the lower land in, in the, in this drainage basin, has, has kind of suffered uh, a lot because of it, namely, if you, and I know Jeannie's gone out on the golf course, I know a couple of other people have, um, you know, they have, they have, you know, very, very large saturated areas, primarily in this, and in this fairway is that, uh- This, up here, yes. What fairway is that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, um, which flows into this pond, and then this pond, there's a kind of a very crude pipe. This was meant to be a dry pond originally, but there's a crude pipe that somebody installed at some time to connect these two ponds. But there's no outlet out of this pond either, and, you know, it's, it's, if you look at it as kind of a saturated kettle, that's where all the water goes. Um, you know, Brooke has, you know, when, when I was very first contacted, he said, "Well, the, you know, I'm getting soaked on this eighth fairway," which is kind of along, over here, along this Concord Drive Development. I'm going to get over to this other exhibit, because that's a little more, has the names, because everything over here is called Foxborough of some sort. The Concord condos, Commons condominiums, and along the eighth fairway over here, um, we have the villages of Foxborough condominiums, which was Chuck Elliott's development. And at the time, when I was originally contacted, there was concern that the, the grading and drainage was not done properly at the villages of Foxborough condominiums, and it was flooding into the eighth fairway. I did quite an extensive review of that at the time, and, and it looked to me like, uh, it wasn't, honestly, I don't think it was the best design system around, um, but it didn't appear that there was water going from that place onto the eighth fairway. However, you know, in working with Brooke and going through the historical data, I pulled up the original construction plans and everything, and, and Brooks attested, and, and I, I even, when we met out there that one day, I told him, I said, "I, I agree with you," that, you know, the original overland, historic overland flow route was along two locations, I believe. One location, which was directly north, right behind the Concord condom, Commons condominiums, um, and there, believe it or not, there is actually a twenty-foot-long easement that goes along, drainage easement is all it's called, that goes along the back of this. However, when these were built, I believe right here and here, it's kind of humped, and so there's, there's no longer, I, I believe, a, a low overland flow route that goes along that route. The other historic overland flow route, according to the, um, data in the, their pre-construction drawings for the, for the development over here, shown overland flow route along here. And so, and that was at about nine, elevation nine forty-two. This whole area floods at about nine forty-two, and, um, really, nothing, I, I don't believe water can get out of here until it gets up to about nine forty-three. Uh, nine forty-three plus or minus nine forty-four, and when it does that, it's pretty much flooding this entire area down here. So, you know, one of the things that, that we've, you know, we've looked at, I mean, and this is something that we're paying a lot of attention in all the developments that are coming through right now, and I'm a very strong advocate for overland flow routes. And basically, those are just areas that when we get an abundance of water, and either storm sewer systems fail, or they plug, or whatever, it's where water goes when, when it, things really hit the fan. And so, um, and overland flow routes are very important, because that's what kind of prevent, can prevent structures from flooding and, and things backing up, and, and that type of thing. Um, I do believe that when this subdivision went in, I believe that it, it, the filling and the grading and everything like that did eliminate this overland flow route that was here. Um, so, you know, they're trying to operate a business. Um, they're, they're trying to operate a, a golf course and keep it viable, and, and a, and a business that, that, you know, is successful, and it's used by a lot of residents. It's, it's bordered by, you see on the village, on, on, what, eight or nine sides, if you really want to call, on both sides of the, the highway there. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, because they can't seem to get rid of the water. Um, we do have this drainage easement along here. We originally looked at it, kind of said, "Okay, well, you know, if something could be constructed to get rid of that water out of that low area, would I say a gravity pipeline work?" And so, you'll see in our, in our, um, report, there's a report from Rooker Milky that I had them do, where I had them come in and complete survey information of this area, just, and as well as the, the, uh, storm structures, to be able to determine if, uh, we could get a gravity pipeline to that. I was trying to avoid, if we ever proposed anything, not having a pump system. That requires power and maintenance, and, you know, a gravity pipeline is, is far better. We determined that it's actually possible, it'd be very shallow, but it is possible to get a gravity pipeline from this location off the eighth fairway into the Catch Basin, that's on Concord Drive, which would then go into our detention pond, and then out into the dry area before it goes into Water Factory Creek. Um, in the meantime, there's also drainage problems, along with the Concord, the condominiums over here again. What were those called? Villages of Foxborough condominiums. There's, uh, if you look on even the historical maps, again, this is one of those things that, you know, we always tend to kind of second guess when things get, after things get built and the problems develop, but this, you know, is a very swampy area back here, and the sump pumps in these residents, in these, uh, condominiums are running literally year-round, continuously. I mean, they haven't even, ever since I first started here. You know, it's been a constantly wet area. So, when they approached us a while ago, and they said, "Well, the village should fix it." We kind of said, "Well, you know, um, it's private property, and you need to take care of your stuff." And they've actually hired an engineer to, and they proposed a gravity pipeline that would be on their side of the fence, that would run north and south. Um, in all this process, I looked at this, and I said, "Well, you know, if we were to ever consider putting a pipeline in this, I want to look at the public benefit for something like this." Um, the public benefit, other than, um, you know, I think there is a, a public benefit just because of the fact that, and, and Brooke will attest to this, if, you know, if he wants to get up and speak, but, um, if the golf course doesn't survive, then, um, you know, the village could be left with, how many acres of-
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight acres of land that's not being taken care of or kept up. And, and golf courses, you know, I've learned in the last two weeks, golf courses are really hurting right now. You know, there, there's, I think you mentioned Lake Geneva. Uh, one time, I drove by, one time I saw this field, it just, you know, three-foot-tall grass everywhere, and I said, "What's that?" And they said, the person said, "Oh, that's the old golf course." And I believe it turned, it started off as a, was it a municipal course down there?
Municipal. Still more, just still more.
Still more, so.
Yeah.
So, and that's not something that we want, you know, our residents to have either. So, when we're looking at, you know, the benefits, there is some benefit to the golf course. If we put in a, the, the idea behind it is we have put in like a collection sump, um, a large box that would have an inlet on top, but then it would be golf course responsibility to run, uh, drain tiles, as they see fit, out into their fairway, to run a connection to their, we're going to call this the Large Pond, because we're going to, later, I'll talk a little bit about that, um, for an outlet structure out of this that would allow them to be able to mon, to be able to handle the, the Large Pond is kind of what they're using right now, is their main buffer, if you will, on storms. If you can pump it down, then when the storm comes and the water comes in, it has a place to go, rather than just out in the grass areas. So, a large collection box, and then a gravity pipeline that would go along here. But then, one of my suggestions is that we would provide, um, and this is something I think we're going to have to be doing a lot of places in the village, is looking at options like this that would provide sump connections. Right now, we are allowing from eight, or from November fifteenth to April first, to people that, to put their sump water into the sanitary sewer. Um, that is overwhelming our plant, but we really don't have many other options right now, because it just goes out and makes a big iceberg in the street or in the lawn, if they do it. Um, but if we can, in the problem areas, develop these areas where people can directly connect to a sump discharge kind of pipeline, that would be able to get that water out of there, if they could do it year-round, and it's not, and it wouldn't be taxing our, our sanitary sewer system as much either. So, with the idea of this pipeline, which our engineers have kind of estimated at around seventy thousand dollars, that's a very rough des- estimate, but my kind of thinking kind of came together, and I said, "Well, let's, um, if the Village of Foxborough condominiums is considering a, an identical side-by-side pipeline, why don't we just make, you know, use one big pipeline and, uh, see if they would be willing to share the cost with it, um, and give them connections to that?" I believe it was the president of the association was here at the meeting, and he said we would wholeheartedly support working with the village in, in something like that. So, I think this is, you know, what, what you're seeing in here is, is kind of the preliminary beginnings of, of action steps that I'm saying. Uh, you know, I said action steps to request from, uh, Rooker Milky to prepare a task order to, to look at the operation of the ponds up here, the North Pond and South Pond, and any kind of improvements that could, or could be made to help, uh, the operation of those. Um, prepare design documents and bidding documents for construction of a collection box and pipeline. Um, and then, uh, we would have to have our attorney, um, our village attorney work towards some access easements and construction easements, um, for this box, and, uh, maintenance easements for this box and everything, so we can still get back to it with equipment, should we need to clean that out or anything. Um, so, that is kind of, let's call that the longer-term plan, that would be, um, and it's open for discussion. I'd be happy to answer questions. I know Brooke and Mike and, and his wife would be happy to answer questions. But, um, you know, Brooke's position, and, and I, I acknowledge this, is that, you know, we're, we're underwater today. You know, and any solution with building a pipeline or anything like that, that could literally take months. You know, the earliest would be early, late, mid to late fall, when we could be out there actually constructing something. Um, and, and that's just not, it's, you know, they, they're, they need, they need something, they need some relief now. Um, I think we are kind of, you know, I, we can ask a lot of questions. Well, who approved this? And I believe that was discussed, or who approved this, you know, going like this, and, um, I mean, we can dig into that. We can find out who the engineers that approved it, and we can, you know, I'm, I'm sure it was Rooker Milky at the time, but, you know, it was a different engineer than what we're working with, person we're de, working with now. Um, you know, these things do happen, um, and they have happened before, so, um, so I, I really applaud kind of an interim solution to this. Um, Mike has, Mike, the golf course superintendent, has been working with Brooke this year and feverishly trying to get wa, rid of water in many different locations on the golf course. Some that are contributing from what we have here, others that are on the way back, back forty, I call it, of the golf course, um, as it heads towards, uh, the highway over there. Um, one of the thoughts that was kicked around is, well, if we could drain, if we could lower the elevation of this large pond prior to storm events, that would allow it to be able to accept this water that comes in during a storm event. And discussion of even possibly the village renting or buying a large pump that would pump this into a storm sewer nearby, which is either up here, up here, or all the way down where we would discharge the gravity pipeline. We actually have a large pump like that in our capital improvement plan, I think, for twenty, twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two. Uh, we have fifty thousand dollars allocated for that at the time. There was a discussion, if we would buy that pump now, we would have to reallocate some of our, our equipment money and, and move some things around. We could do that. But that would be a significant capital investment. That's, I hate making large capital investments on a spur-of-the-moment type of thing. Um, we don't really have any numbers for it. Um, Mike came up with, I think, a very ingenious solution that, um, I think is very positive. There's actually a discharge location somewhere right around here to our storm sewer system, and one right over here. Um, this is, both are off of the storm sewer system that connects back on the Concord Drive. Um, and their, their thought was, eh, you know, if they could pump down that pond on a regular basis by using actually the irrigation pump that's, that's existing, that's in a shed right around here, um, and pump into the irrigation distribution system, and then make a connection to this storm sewer over here. All the pipe is already underground. It's temporary. It would kind of, it would be enough to get them through, basically, this season to allow the governmental process of being able to get a design together, bid, and construct it, um, you know, long-term fix. Uh, but that comes at a cost of making the connection to the system, and it also comes at the cost of electricity. I think, uh, you said, I believe, currently, you've been pumping, trying to get things in, you know, and they face about an eight-hundred-dollar-a-month power bill, um, which when you're not bringing in revenue is, is even kind of doubly hard. So, you know, Mike suggested, well, if, you know, if, uh, we could make a connection to the storm sewer system from the irrigation system, would the village, um, be able to help with the electrical power to do that in order to kind of buy us an interim time? It's not ideal. I mean, it's, eh, you know, it's, it's never ideal in these situations, but it's kind of like what we're dealing with. We just got done with about an hour and a half, two hours on Jefferson, uh, Street, looking at maybe a not ideal situation, but we're looking for interim solutions where we can work with people who come before us. Um, I think this is a, a good interim solution, so a, a third, or a, another motion that was put forward was, um, re, you know, billing, authorizing Public Works to reimburse for the connection and, and electrical costs associated with, uh, pumping, um, on an interim basis, uh, to be able to kind of implement that plan as we move forward through a possible, you know, task orders with the engineers and a bid package. So, I think that's-
Jeff, that's a very good overview. Thank you. Anyone have any questions, uh, before we move on to the motions? I'm going to have two motions. Uh, but if you have some questions, or something about you don't understand about his presentation, now would be a good time. Also, if you have questions for Brooke or Mike out there, be a good time. Cory?
I have a ton of questions, and I apologize. I had to leave that meeting early and didn't get a chance to be a part of that conversation. So, I guess, is it appropriate to discuss this now before we have a motion on the floor?
It's fine.
Okay. So, I guess, first of all, I, I like the spirit of cooperation and, and being a good neighbor. Um, I do, however, want to be a little bit careful that we're not pumping to a place where we're going to be causing a problem somewhere else. Um, have we investigated at all what the downstream capacity to, to take that pumped water would be?
I think that the pumped water, I, you're only pumping at like five or six hundred gallons a minute, isn't it?
Good. What will end up coming out of the ground is a three-inch pipe.
Yeah.
It's at about eighty, two hundred pounds of pressure.
Yeah.
When I'm running the pump hole and goes five hundred gallons a minute, of course, we've got multiple locations. So, what's going into that one storm sewer?
I was going to say, and it's, it's, they've actually been pumping their overland with temporary pumps and borrowed pumps and everything, um, on different occasions, and, and we've never had capacity-
We drained that pond.
Yeah.
We've been doing this ourselves, not the-
Maybe you should probably come up to the microphone, sorry. That way it's, that way people listening can-
We've been doing something similar to this at his cost.
Yeah.
Some of the stormwater water coming from the other pond flooding the rest of it. So, we've been doing it. We emptied the pond completely, and yet it's, the day after it rains, floods the whole area. So, we're just trying to find a temporary solution.
Andy, do you mind, Mike, do you use the other microphone? Do you mind using the other microphone? Sorry, Mike. You don't have to repeat it, just-
Just keep moving now.
There you go, yeah.
Any other, I mean, we went through the whole discussion. We've been working on it. Again, it's just very costly for Brooke to-
I don't, anything, we're not talking about like an, you know, an eight-inch diameter.
No.
Yeah, I realize this isn't a lot of water. Do we have the ability to control and not pump when we're getting rain?
Yes.
Because to me, if, if we're pumping when it's dry, when there's no flow in the system, I don't think we have much to worry about. But even a small amount, you know, five hundred gallons per minute, if we have peak flow in those pipes and we're adding five hundred gallons per minute, anybody that gets damaged can come back to us and say, "You're causing damage to me." Whether it's minor and very tiny, they have a very valid point to have litigation against probably both of us at that point. So, I think if we could control the pumping, it'd be- So I think if we could control the pumping to be just during dry periods, that would be beneficial for both of us.
Is that, you guys have been operating it.
We have been, I mean, there is an easement.
During an immediate storm event, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Because there is, there is an easement from the edge of the golf course to that storm sewer.
Right.
And we have at times pumped into there when we can, there's other places that it's going out.
We actually.
Would we know if the storm sewer inlet was overflowing, that that was then causing the problem? You know, because we have not even approached that yet.
Right. Yeah, this goes into twenty eighteen, well, you're pumping to a twelve-inch here.
Yep.
Considered, Corey, and I'm not sure why exactly, but they do have two inlet boxes, and those aren't necessarily terribly low areas, I don't think.
The farthest, the far north one that you're pointing at right now, that one's actually kind of high.
Yeah.
That one doesn't really take on much water, that one there, and there's a secondary halfway between there and the road, there's a second inlet, Jeff.
Right on, right in here?
Yep, so there's two inlets along that corridor.
There's, yep, you're right. That one right there, and that one right there.
And I've talked to the homeowner of the one on the south, and he saw that, you know, there was, we had pumped into their point, and I asked him if there was ever a problem, and he said, no, absolutely not. He said, a couple of years ago, they did it, and a hose went out, but what we've done, he said, because you had it solid as a rock. He said, it was fine, we didn't get any extra water. And like I said, there is a second inlet farther to the east right there. So I think it can take on plenty of water.
Where does that ultimately discharge to? Does that go to a pond where this water normally wouldn't end up?
Correct, correct, it goes to this pond up here, I'll zoom out here. So it goes into this, this large pond, which is right on the backside of what used to be, well, it's the funeral parlor right now. Howverson's, yeah.
Gunderson's.
Gunderson's, thank you. And then from there, it's out, out to the drainage right here.
So I guess switching gears a little bit, and they tie in a little bit also in my mind. One of the recommendations that is in the motions is to do a study of the two ponds on the golf course that Jeff has indicated are villages' obligation to maintain. I guess from the documentation that I've reviewed, it appears that there was a one-party agreement where the owner of the golf course said that I grant the village an easement. I have not seen documentation that indicates that the village accepted that responsibility of maintaining that long-term. So, you know, again, I don't want to get lost in the minutia of this. You know, it certainly takes storm water from village properties. But what I, where I'm going with this is ultimately those two ponds, one of the items Jeff has in there is to do a study to determine if we can get additional stormwater management out of those ponds. And I think one of the two ways you can do that are either to put a pipe in and drain that pond so it's much drier all the time, which I'm anticipating wouldn't be wanted by the golf course. Would you want those ponds to be completely dried out, or are those water features on the course?
The north pond that's the villages, that is correct, the one he's circling right there, that one's one hundred percent water from storm sewer. That pond has an underground outlet that goes to the main irrigation pond. The main irrigation pond is the one that's flooding, the eighth fairway flooding the surrounding area. If we stop the water coming from the storm sewer pond, the north pond, that will definitely alleviate what we'd get in the main irrigation pond. Our main irrigation pond in the summer will go down as we water. If we water overnight, we actually have to put water into it. But if we want to stop the flooding, we would like to stop the water from the north pond going into the irrigation pond and staying on the course.
So I guess a couple of things. First of all, it seems to me that we're dealing with not a hundred-year rainfall event. We're dealing with a period when your golf course is wet and not functional, when it's been raining all the time. So that to me is a volume issue, not a peak flow issue. So if you block the pipe off, that pond is going to be full all the time, and it won't drain out. And then when you get a rainfall event, it's not going to do any stormwater benefit.
It never goes dry. The one on the left, that's, that stays up to the bottom of the overflow pipe.
Right, so I think that's probably a very close representation of what the groundwater elevation is there. So digging it deeper, I don't think you're going to gain any additional storage. And I think blocking it up, it will always just fill up with water and soak into the ground and get into the golf course anyway. So what I'm getting at is I don't see a lot of benefit in evaluating and changing these ponds. I completely agree that some of the repairs need to be made to the berm and to the pipes, but unless we're looking at completely changing those ponds, putting in a piping system to make them completely dry, I don't think we're going to get a lot of benefit out of that, out of either of them. And I would much rather spend the money in studying and designing the downstream of that pump system until we can get the pipe system to drain that area out. I think that would be a much better use of funds to solve the problem. Ultimately, I think we need that gravity outfall, and I think, you know, that is a good solution. Like Jeff said, that doesn't happen quickly. It's a large-ticket item, and that's where I think if we start evaluating ponds and looking at that, it's going to slow us down from getting to what's really going to help, which is that gravity outfall pipe.
Well, I agree, I don't think we were talking about trying to keep that as a dry pond and pumping it permanently. The pumping is a temporary thing right now because we don't have the overflow structure. Once the overflow structure is in place, then the pumping doesn't need to be. So that, that whole pumping thing, that's until you get your system in place.
So I guess, do you see value in studying, adding capacity to those two ponds?
To doing the study?
Yes.
The only way, like, adding capacity to the north pond, the only way to do it would be to make it bigger in acreage, not in depth. That would maybe eliminate, but no matter what, there still needs to be an outlet from the golf course in some way, whether that pond gets bigger or not, if the capacity. I think the big thing that changed that's different here is that the, what used to be the overflow has been blocked.
I agree.
All we want is that water to be able to leave again. I guess that's what Jeff got to, and like we said, we were happy with what he said, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So Corey, just to, and I completely agree with you. I think the thought process I had when I was kind of generating this memorandum and some suggestions was, you know, these ponds, when they were designed in nineteen ninety, what was this, ninety-four, ninety-five, somewhere in there, the requirements, you know, were apparently a twenty-five, to basically retain a twenty-five-year event, you know, which isn't much when you're considering what we design them to obviously today, you know. And one thing I have done at other communities and stuff like that when I was on the other side of the fence is, you know, we would come in, evaluate a system, and look at how does it, how does it perform using today's modeling techniques using our current stormwater standards? If for some reason we said, you know, we want to bring these ponds up to our current standards, then we would have to do, you know, exactly that. We're not required to, I acknowledge that completely. And, you know, sometimes, you know, and I agree with you as far as the, you know, are we there to maintain them? Or are we just there to be able to access them? You know, that's a legal question, that we'd have to look at what was done in the minutes back then and all that kind of stuff.
And I don't think we need to get into that. I guess, I agree, if you looked at the current standards, they don't meet what a current standard would be. And I think even if they did meet current standards, they don't address the problem that we're trying to address here. Ultimately, if we made them meet the hundred-year peak flow requirements, I don't think it helps what the golf course is trying to do. So, you know, that's where I think we need to kind of focus on the biggest bang-for-the-buck solutions to, you know, help the problem that we're trying to address.
I agree.
So let me ask you a question. So Corey, so you're supporting, I want to make sure I understand here, so you're supporting doing the temporary pumping, is that correct?
I guess with the caveat that I want to make sure that we have an agreement of, you know, terms and conditions of how that gets done, and we make sure that we're not flooding downstream properties.
And then, and you do obviously support the long-term solution of putting, and then you support going and doing the repair work on the ponds?
Yes.
But you don't, you don't support doing the studies?
I don't think the study is a good use of funds.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ralph?
Well, so basically, I guess, in that case, then, you know, I would recommend you go through the three motions separately, and then, actually, the four motions separately, and that would allow you to vote ye or nay on those. Don't you think, to make it cleanest?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I have a couple other questions. How would we pay for this? What fund would, for the pumping plan, I guess, what accounts do we have? And I guess, what are you, how are you planning on paying for that?
Well, the pumping will probably end up just taking out of our general fund, stormwater fund, so it's not going to be that much money. Any type of repair work or studies, we would be taking at this point out of the developer stormwater fund that we've collected money from developers. The actual, we'll have to see what the actual pipe will cost, if we're not, we can cash flow it or we'll have to maybe have to borrow for that, depending on what the cost is on that.
And what contribution we would get, you know, from the condominium association, and there's, I mean, this, the easiest thing of the day is the motion here just to go down the road and do this. The hardest part is going to be getting everyone, you know, together and on it and everything.
Okay, I guess moving forward now, I sense that the action step, have the action steps changed? In your mind, Jeff?
No, just what I understand is Corey, you know, is saying that you would not be supportive of action step one, but would be supportive of action step two and three in my report. And then with the additional motion for the, for the electrical and hookup costs and everything associated with operating the pump, draining the north pond of the property as a temporary measure. Is that, I think that's about where you're at.
Okay.
So.
So, okay, so Jerry, do you maybe want to make, I mean, it's up to you. You can make the motion as recommended, or you can separate them?
I think I'll separate them just for clarity.
So then you're.
I'm a little confused myself right now.
I know, okay.
And I was there.
Yeah. So, can I just say something?
Absolutely.
Great, cool. So I would just like to, first of all, I'd like to commend Trustee Balak for running an amazing four-hour meeting last week. And I'd like to commend Brooke and Mike for conducting yourselves really professionally, really calmly. I know that you guys are under a lot of stress financially. Corey, this has been a situation for three years, and I don't think any of us want a golf course to go out of business, so we're trying to beat these guys in the middle and help them out. So I would support all these motions, because I think Jeff, you've been on the course, I've been on the course, Jerry's been on the course. We're just, we're trying to keep this ball rolling, right, guys? And I know that you're being very quiet, and I appreciate that. Because I think I know what you would say if you wanted to talk right now. So I appreciate that, I just want you to know that I understand your frustration and your stress level. And so we're gonna, we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna work together, and we're gonna keep being professional. And Jeff, thank you so much for all of your work on this.
Oh, thanks.
Yes, so.
The only thing I want to add is, not, we're really just voting move forward with getting task orders.
Right.
You're not committing any major funds to it yet until we bring those task orders, hopefully, back by the seventeenth to your meeting, which would then, that's when we're going to be able to say, okay, this is the amount we're committing to financially move forward with that.
Okay.
So to make it simple, if you, if you can, if I could direct your attention to Jeff's memo and the list of village action steps, you could take them, there are three village action steps. So the first motion could be to approve action step number one, which, as Jeff said, is to request that Rooker Milky prepare a task order to study the stormwater ponds.
Right, except I heard Trustee Horton disagree with the modeling for potential improvements to both ponds to increase storage. I heard him, his testimony that he doesn't think we need to increase storage. So do we still want to say that, or?
So, you know, I have no problem taking a vote on this. I guess what I'm looking at with this is having an, you know, if we had an unlimited pot of money, by all means, study everything you possibly can. But we don't, we have a finite amount of money, we have a lot of stormwater issues in the village, and I don't think studying those ponds is the best place for us to spend that money. I think we're going to have enough trouble coming up with seventy thousand dollars to put an overflow pipe in there, and if we're spending money on studies ahead of that, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot and not be able to get what is really going to make a difference, not only for the golf course, but for our residents that need that as an outfall for their sump pumps. So I'm just trying to prioritize things. If we put it off now, we can always study it again later. But that's just my opinion, and by all means, you know, I'm, I'm one vote here. I'm not the sole voice here, and if others want to do it, I completely understand.
No, and I only bring that up so it can be debated.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I think it makes a lot of sense. I mean, I was at the whole meeting, and I don't think we're going to get a lot of storage out of that. I agree with Corey on that.
So, but Jeff, this is your, this is your recommendation, right, of staff? So, this is my point. So, laypeople, we are not going to disagree with the staff and say we're not going to.
I don't disagree at all with what Corey is saying.
All right.
At all. I mean, I'm just saying, when we're looking at it, and he's exactly right, you know, if we're going to study everything, we get in and, you know, to me, if someone's saying, are those ponds operating the way they're supposed to be? I don't know that, you know, they were built twenty years ago, and, or twenty-five years ago, and, you know, I don't know if they're sized correctly, I don't know if they used, all we have is old modeling data. So as an engineer, I look at it and say, oh, it'd be interesting to know, A, if they're operating the way they were originally designed, and B, are there improvements we can make to those ponds to help in some way? You know, and whether it be an outlet structure or whatever. Because even if we put an outlet structure in today, Brooke still has to do something on his golf course to get the water that comes out of that outlet structure safely to another pond, or something like that. So there's still a significant investment in time and money they have to make in doing that. But, but I completely understand and don't argue at all with what Corey's saying.
Could I just make one point?
Mm-hmm.
So just make sure everyone understands, though, the motion is not to authorize spending any money on doing any studying of any stormwater ponds. It's just to get a price from Rooker Milky as to what it would take to do that.
Okay.
So then you could, then you could make the final decision about whether to go forward or not once you've got that information.
I think that makes it easy, I have no problem finding, you know, if they say it's a couple thousand dollars, no biggie. But if they say, you know, five or ten thousand dollars, I think we really should, you know, think about that.
Yeah, and I think what Matt's saying is this will come back to us before we spend any money, so.
Yeah, with task orders.
Yep, okay, so.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Jeff. Thanks. I did think Trustee Horton brought up an interesting point about downflow. So will this, when we put out the bid, this study, will it also take into, will the bid take into account that we would potentially want the study to understand what happens downstream as well as an effect of whatever changes we make?
That's a different, yeah, that's, that's, this is just, the worry of the, or the concern of the downstream is just making sure that whatever, we wouldn't stick a huge pump in here, pump it over to here, and then all of a sudden overwhelm the system back up into someone's back basement and fill their basement with stormwater. And so it's a good point and everything, so that has, that's just the temporary measure. This is more looking at the long-term permanent solution, which, which is, would have nothing to do with anything pumped.
Right, but it would potentially affect things downstream.
Different system, actually.
Oh, okay.
It's a different, this, everything going into the pump, everything pumped on a temporary basis is going over to this pond. Everything gravity would go up to this pond up here, up here.
Yeah.
Two questions. Is it feasible to pump it where it would naturally go out that twenty-foot easement?
Not, it, well, that's, that's what we were looking at first, is, you know, what if we, the first thought we had was rent a diesel pump, put it right out here, or right next to the pond, and lay seven hundred feet of discharge tubing through that easement, and then to this location. That's possible, but then we have the noise of the pump, which can be, can be muffled and stuff, but having to haul diesel out there and all that kind of stuff.
So there's no irrigation lines that we could pump in that? So there's no irrigation lines that we could pump in that direction?
No, the irrigation system ends right, probably right around here somewhere, doesn't it?
There is an irrigation line there, but there's no, there's nowhere to pump it into.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
You would end up having to go all the way up to the street.
Sure.
What we're gaining with in this size is it's six.
Sure. Yeah, I guess from a convenience standpoint, I totally get that, but from a legal ability to get litigation, I think we're much safer sending it where it typically goes. Jeff, do you know how the, the pond functions that's further to the east where the pumped water into the system would go? Is that thing filled? I mean, I've been driving around and water's everywhere.
Water's everywhere, right.
If that pond is completely filled all the time and we're putting five hundred gallons per minute to it, that might create a problem for that pond.
These ponds are not completely filled. I mean, they're, they're flowing, but they're not, they're not at, you know, what I would call it, the staged, staged at the higher outlet elevations, you know. They do when we get some rain, but that's pretty short-lived.
I drive by it every day. That one's not full, the one across the street, that's dry.
This one?
You go straight, no, you go straight across the, yeah, go straight, yeah, I'm sorry, you go straight across the street, that one's dry because kids are playing in it all the time.
Back here.
I live there, so I drive by it all the time. It's not.
Yeah.
I, for attorney, I guess, are you concerned with pumping and the liability that that creates for the village?
Well, here's what I would like to do. I'm gonna answer that question, but what I, we're gonna get to a motion on the question of pumping and what the village's role would be in that. But I think that'll be the last motion we address. So can we hold that question? And when we get there, let's talk about that concern and I'll give you my answer to that question.
Okay.
I think, I don't even know if we have a motion pending yet.
We don't, yeah, no, I have not.
Okay.
We've had an overview and we're still in the question and answer part of the overview.
Just because, just because it does get confusing when we're juggling around, I think if you could humor me, if we could work through the two action, the three action steps on the memo and then the last motion would be whether to, I have some questions about the pumping as well that I don't really answer too, so if we could get to the pumping discussion at that point.
Okay, so.
Can I make a motion?
Um, you sure can.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the three recommended terms from Jeff's letter that is in the packet. So to obtain a work order from Rupert Milkie for studying the ponds for.
The design and.
The design of, of the overflow system and then, what was the third one?
Commission, uh, request our village attorney to draft temporary construction.
Oh yeah, the attorney for the temporary access easement.
Which I would wait to do until.
Can we have a second, please?
Yeah, I'll second that. Okay. So Jerry, I'll just wrap that one up for you. So we have a, so we have, basically we have a, a motion to approve Public Works Director's Jeff Ross's recommendations on page six of his memo dated May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty.
I guess, could I make another motion before we get to that? I'd like to make a motion to add in, to have Rupert Milkie also study the downstream system for capacity for pumping.
And this is the, the temporary pumping that we're talking about?
That'll be on the, that'll be added to that.
It's a new motion.
It's a new motion. Separate motion, but.
Can you repeat it, Cory?
I don't think we have that last motion on the table yet. I, I want to make sure I understand what the pumping motion is.
That's what I was kind of heading at is I think, because here's your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion for right now.
So here's my question about the pumping, Jeff.
Well, good.
If we could, when you're ready.
So we, so we voted on the memo, so the memo is approved.
Oh, that's approved.
Do we want, yes.
Okay, sorry, I was behind.
That's okay. Um, Matt, would you like a motion on the table on the pumping or should I discuss it first?
I just have, would like to discuss it first briefly. Okay, so Jeff, my understanding of the motion originally was limited to just authorizing the Director of Public Works to authorize reimbursing Foxborough Golf Course for the cost of electricity they incur in operating pumps to pump water from the large storage pond to the village's storm sewer system.
Correct, and we would also, we would also paid for some connection fees, some connection, you know, fittings and.
Material to make the connections. So let me ask a question about this. Does the, does the golf course need approval from the village or from the Public Works Director? Beyond, you know, setting aside the cost of electricity, is there some approval required to actually connect to our system and discharge into it and pump into it?
There would be, yes.
Okay, is that something you had to administratively? And do you have a process that you use for evaluating like downstream capacity and do you have a way of managing that so you can decide when they can pump and when they can't pump so that they're not pumping during the middle of the storm?
Not up to this point, I mean, because like, like Mike was saying, it's a three-inch discharge into a system that was a twelve-inch line to eventually a twenty-four and twenty-seven inch line. So it's, it's not been a concern, but I mean, no, we've not.
But do they, is Foxborough Golf Course gonna need your approval to pump? Are they, are you gonna be in a position to, to, I guess, are you gonna be in a position to supervise and manage how and when they pump?
I was not planning on it. I think Mike and, Mike has exhibited enough. We, they've been doing, they've honestly been doing this for.
Twelve years. Only off for twelve, only off for twelve years. Aaron Mognan, who was my first superintendent, who was the superintendent of University Ridge for seven years, he's now a, went from an attorney to a judge, sharp guy. He's been, we've been pumping water in a two-inch line for at least twelve to thirteen years. Eric Peterson, who had pumping acquired us, who that same.
Into the village's storm sewer system.
That easement that we have that's along our ninth pole, which is right over Jeff's head. And it's, it's funny because the people that live in those houses, we take hose over there and the guy will come out and say, yep, we know you have an easement. So they don't even question it. I mean, I get more questions than other things, but when all of a sudden you see a hose pumping water into the thing in the spring of the year, neither one of those homeowners has ever even come to me and said a word. They know there must be something in the writing, and those houses have been sold a couple times. There must be something in the verbiage when they buy those homes that there is a storm sewer easement that Foxborough Golf Course has.
So Jeff, in your mind, the only issue the village board needs to vote on technically is whether to approve the reimbursement of the cost of the electricity.
Connection electricity, yes.
Because you think you could administratively authorize the connection and the pumping without a vote on it?
Well, yeah, in the same way that we, we look at connections to our storm system with sump pumps and other stuff that, we do that usually administratively. We never bring those before village board. Unless it was something really significant. This could be considered significant.
I don't know if that addresses your questions, Trustee Horton.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I had a separate question. We were talking about participating in some of the fees for connection and then I'm hearing that they've been pumping there for twelve years. I guess, can you explain to me what the connection fees are needed?
Yeah, sure.
What he's talking about is when it was once in a while, they, they, you would do it, but it's a hose over the ground that golf carts drive on that had, can get pulled out of the storm sewer and then go into somebody's yard. If this is something that's been going on and like, at the meeting that we had last Wednesday, I said, we've drained the pond and it filled overnight from a two hour, two-inch rain. A lot of that's coming from storm sewer stuff. Nobody was really aware prior to January that the storm sewer was adding such a volume of water to the golf course. We're just trying to help get it out of there. So instead of having a hose that runs from the pump house across the golf course that people drive over that gets kicked and bumped, this is actually tying into a main irrigation system underground, popping it out, out of the ground at the edge of the golf course, going over a few feet and putting it into the storm sewer. So now it's actually not disruptive to anything. And again, it's the cost of running the pump. We made the, we made the offer to do that as opposed to the village buying a fifty thousand dollar pump, bringing somebody in to fill diesel. We thought this was a better option. Because they were talking about getting a pump to alleviate the water, taking it seven hundred feet to the road. That seemed like a lot of unnecessary cost and maybe not the most efficient way to do it. We offered this as a better solution.
So I, what is the connection cost then? What do you expect that will be?
I had called Jeff and we had, for the whole thing to, the parts, labor, repair was three thousand dollars.
Okay, we ready for a motion?
Jerry, do you want to make the motion as the chair of the.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to authorize the Public Works Director to reimburse Foxborough Golf Course for electrical costs associated with operating their pump draining the north pond on their property as a temporary measure until a permanent gravity pipeline can be permanently designed, bid and constructed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I was gonna say the cost to come from the stormwater fund, is that correct? For that?
Yes.
Okay.
Jerry, would you mind adding electrical costs and connection costs?
Uh, yes. Candy, would you modify that to include electrical costs and connection?
It's okay, yes.
Electrical and connection costs.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Yep.
I second Jerry.
Okay. Uh, go ahead Cory.
From a legal standpoint, if we're getting involved with the construction, does that put us more, I guess, at risk?
You mean like the connection piece?
If we're funding the connection piece.
I don't think it puts us more at risk. I mean, the risk you seem to be concerned about is downstream impacts.
Yes.
If there are downstream impacts, then I think you said earlier, both the village and the golf course might be looking at having to respond to those. And I, but I don't see that the village would be more at risk just because we're funding the electricity or we're funding the connection. We are allowing this connection to our system though, and so if our system cannot handle it and there ends up to be a damage to someone as a result, yes, we'd be, we'd be looking at responsibility for that. So that's why I was asking the questions about can we manage it appropriately? Is this, is, are we, are we concerned about downstream impacts?
So to recap, Jeff, are you, are you concerned about downstream impacts? Should we be voting yes on this?
Um, I'm not, I'm not concerned with downstream impacts, especially given the size of line we have going to it.
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to recap. Okay. Any other, any other questions? All right, all in favor of the motion to reimburse the Foxborough Golf Course for electrical costs and connections, say aye.
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 No.
Motion carries. Anyone else want to make any other motions on this? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen and misses. Thank you for your time. All right, so Jeff, you'll be bringing stuff back to us, right?
Yep, absolutely, it's the seventeenth.
All right, so moving on, we don't have any minutes for current action. We have no unfinished business. Thirteen new business. We have approval of pending new operator licenses. These are all recommended approval by the police department. We have staff and goat Christopher Clausen, headquarters Hannah Cooper Rider, headquarters Jerick Smithen, headquarters Benjamin Leek, Quick Trip seven thirty-one Nathan Klybauer, Quick Trip seven thirty-one Emma Fisher, Quick Trip seven thirty-two Leah Brown. So we have a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? These are all approved by the police department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, we have approval of pending renewal operator licenses. These have all also been approved by the police department. We have Bill's Food Center Travis Mobley, Bill's Food Center Stephanie Van Fossen, On Ice Promotions Suzanne Cowan, On Ice Promotions Donald Cowan, Quick Trip three oh two Troy Brumman, Ace's Main Tap Bridget Ace. Have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Yes.
For the, the two On Ice Promotions, that isn't, I'm sorry, my memory is failing me right now. That's not the person who was here previously. Oh, it is. And they plan on, they plan on bringing the description back on the seventeenth.
So then. So this isn't, this isn't approving the local license, this is approving the, basically a bar's different license.
Right. And technically you can get it for the entire village, so we just let you know what business it is.
Next question. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We don't have any other pending licenses. We have some future agenda items. There's nothing else.
Wait, excuse me. Um, I just wanted to know if we were gonna add as a future agenda item, uh, creating a stormwater utility. Mike had mentioned, you'd mentioned in the public works meeting, something about how the laws are changing at the state level. Could you explain that?
Sure. Uh, well, it, I, it came, I think, out of joint finance. I, I guess I would probably wait till it's officially approved before we start spending time on it.
Oh, okay, so it's not official yet.
I mean, I think it's a good chance it's gonna happen because it came out of committee, but my, I, I'm happy to talk about it at a future meeting, but I would, I would wait till it's approved.
Nothing's official till the governor signs it.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I, I was under the misunderstanding that it had already changed, so.
No, I'm sorry, I'm just, no, sorry to confuse you on that. It's not, it's not approved until the governor signs it.
Okay, thanks.
That's it.
All right. All right, so then we have number fifteen. The village board will adjourn into closed session. To Wisconsin statute nineteen eight-five, present one E, to discuss possible property acquisition for the rigoree bike trail. And we will adjourn from the closed session. So Candy, roll call, please.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Jenna and Amanda?
Valley?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Engage.
Yes.
All right, we will go into closed session. Thank you, everybody. So it's the third?
I don't know if you know, but.
It is the third.
One of those trees have been cut down.
How is it June already? Can I just say that out loud?
It's gonna fly by this year.
Yeah, it's June third. What, like fifty-eight degrees out today?
Furniture, I guess.